And join me in the cliche allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, additions, changes to the existing agenda? Okay, I got a motion by Rick Sider, second by Sean Ryan to approve the agenda as presented. There's no other comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. First item on the agenda is a resolution approving certain actions by the New Frank Economic Development Authority. Mike, you're going to take this one?
I will. I'm going to do the background of this as well as I'm going to introduce when I get done Mr. Howard Braith, and then I'll let him introduce the rest of his family. I know his wife, but I'm not sure I can adequately name all the rest of the family members that are here. But tonight's action is that the EDA on April 29th here recently held a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the sale of land and the purchase and development agreement between the authority and Braith Properties LLC. We have a copy of the materials in the packet. And in the attached packet, it was kind of an overview of the proposed sale of Lot 1, Block 1, New Prague Business Park, the 11th addition, which is the first lot. We got the rim. Anyway, it's the first, there you go, Ken's got it right there. The first lot in the industrial park. The third lot in, which is the sole sign where Paul Enzo has his business operations. So Mr. Braith is looking at buying the initial lot coming into the industrial park. In there is, the lot is about 2.59 acres in size. The full land purchase price is $150,000. And Mr. Braith is looking to construct just under 5,000 square foot building that's going to be used for his mechanical repair shop, including both automobiles and trucks. Ken's got a layout here just to give you a general idea of on the proposed lot, what the building site looks like with access coming up Sixth Street Northwest. The next slide is a little bit difficult to read, but it's the layout of the building, but it's got all the dimensions on it. We didn't really have one without any of the dimensions, and so it's a little tough to read. I'll let Howard elaborate a little bit more if he wants to on what it's all going to contain. And then the last one is just the exterior views on the, I think we're looking at the south, the east, and the west exterior views. Ken, we have the north view as well. There's the north view, so there's kind of all of them. But Mr. Braith operates a business about five miles out of town, I believe, Howard?
Yep.
And he's wanting to bring in and to construct a new facility. So he's a little bit more visible and closer in town than being five miles out of town. A lot of business comes from his community, and he's finding that he can be more visible. He's located in town. So following the public hearing, the EDA adopted the resolution to sell the property to Mr. Braith as well as approve the purchase and development agreement. But it does require council approval of that action and recommendation from the EDA. So in front of you tonight is a resolution that formally approves certain actions by the New Prague Economic Development Authority. That approval is, is the sale of land by the authority, and the contract buying among the authority and developer are hereby approved, and the decision of the authority or further authorized to take all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the intent and purpose of the resolution. And to tell you how fast we're acting, assuming in good faith you approve it tonight, we have a closing schedule for 12:30 tomorrow afternoon. So Mr. Braith isn't waiting around and expects to have operations underway here by the middle of May. So we're quite excited with that. So that's really the background that I could provide to you. I'd offer Mr. Braith the opportunity to come up and introduce to us his family and tell you a little bit about his intentions of what he's hoping to do, and then answer any questions, and then have council take action.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, guys. First of all, appreciate the opportunity. The shop that we believe is our next, or our next building block to Braith Auto, to build the business into the future, to, obviously we all know the cost of everything that's going up and up and up, to allow more income, more customers. Location, I think, is prime across from Char, across from the industrial Scott equipment and whatnot. I believe just the walking distance alone will increase the business enough to make the financial decision. As far as my family, my daughter at the end, Rebecca, my wife, Doreen, and my son, Tim. Tim runs a shop with me. This is actually his shop in a few years. He just don't know yet, right? His debt. But just the opportunity to move to town. We've heard a lot of comments through the years of, you know, way out there, you know? Years ago, five miles maybe wasn't such a big John, but in today's society and culture, it's fast paced, and five miles seems to be some new term. So just the opportunity to move to town and expand. So we look forward to it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mike or Howard?
I have a quick one for Howard. Is that, are you putting stone or brick? Is it, could you just fill that?
Yeah, the building, if you've been out to Braith Auto or Bent Bide in the country, it's great building, blue. It would be the shaded roof and the trim. The front would be a veneer stone. So the south entrance, which would be seen from Sixth. So the office in the front, and then the east would be all veneer. Then the north or the west, you see the office would be veneer, and then the rest would be the blue matching tin, which is, would match the roof and the trim. And then up is the north side. That would be, you wouldn't even see it until future expansion of Sixth Avenue, but then that would be just tin on the bottom. It won't be visible other than people directly in and of the future expansion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution.
So.
Second.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Maggie Bass to approve the resolution. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, vacant lot. Mike, you're going to take this one also?
Yes, I will. Couple months ago, the council had a discussion and consideration regarding the potential, acquisition of a parcel of property located at 101 Main Street West. This recommendation came from the advisory task force that we've been working with that's been involved in helping put together various thoughts and recommendations that will be coming to you at your 20th meeting. But this one in particular was to recommend to the council to acquire this property, to have it be developed into open space or a park in the downtown. And following the council's deliberation, the decision was made to not move forward with the purchase of the property described herein, at least by the city, which had been recommended by the downtown advisory task force. Subsequent to that consideration, the property was recommended to the city, and an offer came forward from a couple of our well-known citizens. Dr. Michael and Kate Wilcox came forward with an offer and proposal for the city to buy the property if they made a donation to the city to purchase the property. So in here, as you have a proposed donation from the Wilcoxes in the amount of $55,000 to be used to purchase this vacant parcel of land. The intent of their donation is that it would be used by the city to acquire the land for it to be developed and used as open space and/or as some type of park in the downtown versus leaving it be the vacant parcel that it's been for about the last 15 years. The donation comes with minimal conditions, as noted in the attached resolution. And I'm sure you've been able to take a look at those elements. I summarized them, as the property is proposed to be known as Central Plaza. We've engaged some outside assistance to assist with the development of the property. That the council agreed to establishment of a committee to recommend the details of the future development of the property. Anything that would be done would require and/or receive council approval. Nothing could be done without the council's approval. And then finally, they can purchase the installation of a small plaque upon the property memorializing the donation and the donors. That assuming the council is willing to accept those conditions, the donors would then issue a check to the city for $55,000. Anytime a donation comes forward to the city like this and has certain conditions in order for us to accept it under Minnesota statutes, it requires the council to take action by way of the formal consideration of the resolution. That resolution acceptance also requires forfeits for the council to accept that resolution. Second part of this is that if the donation is accepted and the check is issued to the city, then we would use those proceeds to institute and make a purchase offer to buy the property from a Mr. Gary Staver. Included in your packet is a proposed commercial purchase agreement and addendum as prepared by the city attorney's office. And there has been conversations with Mr. Staver that the terms and conditions outlined in the purchase agreement and addendum are already acceptable to him as it's written. So that if you are to approve that tonight and you accept the donation, that we would go forward with that purchase agreement. And he's already indicated a willingness to accept the terms and conditions so that you didn't approve something and we went back to start the process and then find out that he wants to make modifications or changes in that purchase agreement and addendum. Those documents have both been reviewed by the city attorney's office, and so they have signed off on those and would recommend those to you should you decide to move forward in the second part of tonight's action. And as you take a look at it, the Wilcoxes, as I indicated in the last memo and my memo to you, is that they're of the belief that this intersection at Central Avenue and Main Street is kind of in the middle of the downtown. They believe it's been an eyesore for many years. And they believe that with their donation and the development assistance by the city and possibly other committee donors, that this parcel of land can become a very positive open space public park that would play a very visible prominent role in the future of a city in the downtown. And hopefully it could be constructed around the same part of the project for the 2020 Hyde project, which is scheduled to be initiated next summer. So you've got it set up that you have an offer of a donation with certain terms and conditions with the belief that if you accept it and agree to those terms and conditions and you authorize the approval of the execution of the purchase agreement with Mr. Staver, that this can come together. I know there were questions raised when we looked at this a number of times ago, and just maybe to clarify, in the purchase agreement that what we were able to put together there is all of the pending special assessments on Central Avenue would be paid in total as part of this purchase agreement. So those that are pending that were levied 2013, that were spread over 15 years, would all be paid upfront at the time of the closing. However, the pending assessments on the 2020 project would become the city's responsibilities, and those total about $6,500 for that respect. There are monies included in the 2020 project that the council would have at their disposal that can be used for the development of this property. And so we believe that there are adequate funds that, in working with the downtown committee and the council's approval, subject to what might be recommended. One of the thoughts are, is that we did have a survey done on this property. We did find that the easterly wall of the Pioneer Saloon Bar does extend out into the actual vacant lot. We believe, although it's not recorded and have not been able to uncover it, but there was an agreement between not the current owner, but the prior owner with the owner of the Pioneer Bar, that when the fire occurred on that property and they rebuilt the east wall of Pioneer Saloon. Is that, that was about a foot, about one foot out into this vacant lot, and that there was a supposed agreement that was entered into between the two parties, but we've not been able to get our hands on that nor title work that we've been involved with. And we've been able to ascertain that that does exist. But the assumption from the discussions that we had in the various parties is that wall would have to have been built inside and taken away some of the interior space of the Pioneer Bar. And so the owner of the vacant lot at that time allowed that intrusion into the vacant parcel with the idea and the understanding that whoever might build on the vacant lot as it currently exists would be able to attach to that wall. So with the development of Art Road, the base of Plaza, that really wouldn't come to bear fruit, but there's been discussion that ideally that we could then paint a mural or something, or have a mural painted on that wall, since that technically would be the wall that we would have a right to connect to. There's a program through the Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund where we can get free paint. We just have to work with whoever we're going to find to be able to paint some type of mural on there with that. But as you can see in the donation, there's a recommendation of a list of a number of individuals that Ms. Wilcox, Mrs. Wilcox had identified. But really, it's the council's choice, but these were the things that came forward from her in trying to take a look at, trying to put together an independent group that would be able to put together some thoughts and ideas and to ultimately submit those to the council for your review and approval. So I'd stand for any questions. They were not intending to be here. Mike and Kate were not intending to be here, that they're not looking for any major fanfare on this. But they are deeply committed to wanting to help improve the look of the downtown. And although the council didn't see fit at the time to move forward, they are offering us an opportunity. This contract and negotiation was facilitated by Renee Christensen, who is working as a facilitator between the city and Mr. Staver. But there are no real estate commissions involved in this transaction.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, Mike, does, on the environmental portion of it, is there going to be an environmental study on it?
We've talked internally that we've gone back, Ken has, through all of our land records and don't believe that there is an environmental issue that we need to contend with. And so we're not recommending a phase one to go and do that. If we do anything, is that it would be slight disturbance in the soils to put in some type of park setting type feature. And so we're not going down and building, we're not going down at the water table, or we're not going down. There might be one cement foundation piece that we might have to remove in the northeast corner of the lot that might have to come out. But we're not looking at any major significant.
Studies?
Well, we're not, no, we're not looking at going down construction wise, but we're going to have to go down and put in major footings or anything of that nature. So we're not looking at any major disturbances.
Would that also include any of the potential, if Bruce's department wanted?
Yeah, there would not be an adept that would cause us any concerns.
Okay, thank you.
It's very exciting to be at this point and to read a wonderful donation that we're looking at. When we first talked about this site, it was anticipated that possibly there'd be a junction box of some sort with the Main Street project. Do you recall that at all?
Yeah, we've had discussions internally as to what might be needed, but there are no specific defined plans that I can put in front of you tonight to tell you what that might look like.
I think Bruce commented that they, some kind of a square or something to, I'm not sure, to hook up. That would be a good location for that. I'm not sure if that would still be anticipated for receiving this as a donation or to purchase the property, rather? Or if so, just to make sure?
Yeah, in all the conversations we've had with the downtown committee, should that ever have occurred, that there would be a blend or a mix of that to ensure that any public features like that that we need to have put there would be done or interwoven in with whatever design was needed so that they would basically merge together and work cooperatively together.
Well, that's great. Exactly. But I didn't really envision that it's just going to be in the Main Street area or further in on Central Avenue or wherever. But just so it's coordinated, there's no surprises, I don't want to.
No, that's why that when you take a look at.
Affect the landscape.
When you take a look at members of city staff being involved with the committee, it would be for that purpose to help ensure any specific design need that we think we need to have happen there, is that that could be worked in with whatever the committee might come up with for the design.
Administratively, would this fall under the per, the alleyway of the bus in the future?
It's not coming in to specifically be a park. And so we had talked that, you know, we've been back and forth a little bit is that it's a donation to the city, you know, with it being titled Central Plaza and that, that, you know, one can argue it potentially both ways, but hadn't looked at really just dumping it in the lap of the park board, but would have involvement from the park board involved in helping take a look at the design of that. It's not like they're going to do any programming or any activities or have any facilities on it. And so once it's designed and sitting there, there's really not much of a role that they would play in doing that, other than we probably would have to use park or street staff ultimately to take care of whatever plantings and refus and other things that might materialize on this particular site. So we're not here specifically tonight that, and I don't know that we need to make that decision tonight or even think about that going forward, that, you know, the hard part was trying to get enough of the detail put together to get it in front of you to see if you had interest. And if you did, moving forward, the acquisition, we can do those kinds of things in the future.
Thank you.
Will there be any kind of appreciation towards the Wilcoxes then for such a great donation?
Well, as they, you know, in recognition, knowing that they have younger children and grandchildren and that, that, you know, they're not looking for a lot of public fanfare, but, you know, one was that we just do something that identifies them as donors. And, you know, how we handle that might be later on, once the park gets developed and put together, that we bring them forward as part of, part of that, you know, where we've got a formal donation plaque or something put together that we can do something publicly with them at that point. They didn't necessarily want to be here this evening, because like I said, they're not looking for a lot of fanfare on this. But these kind of public community donations don't come forward like this very often. And so it's really kind of nice, you know, with Cam, who'd been a former council member, and having sat in your seats and been involved in a lot of activity in the downtown and in the park system and community, to have the Wilcoxes make this kind of formal offer to be able to do this.
Mike, on number three, where it says establish a committee to recommend details of future development of property, is that just relating to the property dealing with the 2020 project? And then once that plan is done and developed, is that committee still going to be involved in that property? Or is it just the initial development of the property?
Of the property. That this committee is intended to be involved just with helping design and put together concept plans for the development of the lot.
Okay. And then once that's done and everything, that committee is basically.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Sider.
Second.
Second by Maggie Bass to accept the resolution, accepting the donation. And I assume that's what your emotions. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, Mike, we, five oh, we didn't have to do a roll call, did we?
No, then the second one is, didn't you?
Yep, second one is, anyone have any questions regarding the purchase agreement? As Mike said, this was reviewed by our city attorney.
I ran through it. Do I have any?
Oh, she has. We have the city attorney and Maggie, we're in good shape now. We're in good shape.
We've got to take action on the second one.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement and addendum.
Second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Yes, Glenn, you are up.
Good to you. It's great to see you get off your chair.
It's good to talk to you. In front of you, you have the recommendation or the proposal for the seal coat beds. We do seal coating on the streets every year. Taxes and maps showing which streets we're planning to be done this year. And also kind of a little history of what the bid pricing has been for seal coating since 2005, so you can kind of see the trend of going up, come back down, and where that's all been going. And most of you know, or probably you know, that seal coating is a way to help preserve the road, keep the asphalt fresh by putting down a hot oil and putting rock on top of the oil. The reason that we put the rock on top of the oil is that way you can open up the road quicker. The rock really has no benefit to the seal coat process besides opening the road quicker, which if you didn't put the rock down, you might have to close that road forward depending on the weather, anywhere from five to probably eight hours. So you would have no traffic on it. So that's all the rock does. Just like in the past, we advertise this in the local paper, which states action is required. We also send out proposals to companies that have bid or we know would possibly bid on a job like this. We set out the request for proposal and then also specifications along with that request. And unfortunately, this year, we only got two bids or two quotes. And you see Pearson Brothers is the lowest one at $1.19 per square yard. Pearson's has worked here in New Frank on seal coating for, since 2003. 2017 is the only time they did not get project. That was allied, blacked out the guy at that time. But Pearson's have been around for a long time. They're a good company to work with. So the recommendation from staff is to accept the low bid from Pearson Brothers for seal coat, 99,000 square yards for a price of $117,812.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a clarification, did you, was it bid on just the per square yard? Or did you tell them how much, how much road footage is, length?
Per square yard.
Just per square yard?
Yep.
And then did you select based on just falling within the budget number? And just picked as many roads based on what you could do?
We actually had more, we had a little more square yardage figured in because we were expecting the bids coming a little less. So as we've done in previous years, we've either added a road or two or taken it away because of the bid price.
So you reduced?
We reduced it this year.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that a material difference that those roads don't get sealed? Does it make a difference?
No, we have that cushion as far as a road that is probably a pretty good candidate, but not necessarily needed this year. So if the price came in, because as cheap as we were hoping it would, or even a little cheaper, we had left those roads in because at that price, it would make sense to go ahead and do it. But it really wasn't a big difference in square yardage. It made the difference of like one road.
Thank you.
What is the turnaround time? Is it on average every five years for this kind of?
Pretty, pretty average five years. We'll put some roads six years, depending on the volume on that road, things like that. Some roads, not too many of them, but like 10th Avenue Southeast, that would be a candidate to seriously look at after four years and do that. And again, the volume of traffic on a road really makes the difference because traffic running on the road heats up the asphalt warmer than mother nature or the sun does. So if it's a high-volume road, it will most times through. sun does. So, if it's a high volume road, it will most times require more service.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the seal coat bid from Pearson Brothers. I get a motion by Sean Ryan.
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice seeing you again.
Second thing I got for you.
Yeah, no, let's not, let's not push it, Mike.
The second thing I got for you is the material testing professional services that's required on all of our construction projects. Again, is required this year on County Road Thirty Seven and all the other roads that we're doing. The testing company does, the biggest things they do for a project like this is they check compaction after the, if there's pipes replaced, if there's things like that, they will actually do a test on the compaction to make sure that they did a good job tamping around manholes, things like that. This project being it's a mill and overlay for majority of the project, the big thing they'll be doing for us is testing the new asphalt that's going down. They actually will be at the plant as they're mixing up asphalt, and they'll take samples, random samples as the batches are being mixed. Same thing with the concrete. They'll be doing samples at the concrete plant. They'll also be doing samples as they're laying the concrete. And again, just a certain number of random samples that they'll be taking. They test it for strength. They test the oxygen and the air volume in there and things like that. This is kind of the same thing as seal coated. It's just soliciting or request for proposals on this. American Testing and Braun Internet InterTech has been part of testing in this area for a lot of years. Braun's been working for the city in Dupre for number of years. They've always done a really good job. Their quotes in past years have always come in very close. Sometimes that number will change. What changes it is the contractor can kind of cause us some trouble. If they say that they're going to be ready for this test on Tuesday afternoon and they're not, that causes another trip. If it's an ongoing issue, then we kind of go after the contractor to help pay for some of those things. Most of the time, that's not a big issue. Mother Nature can play a big role in it. The other thing that will change, could change this proposal is if we find something we didn't expect. It's happened to us on a few road jobs, not many, thank God, but it's happened to us where we pulled the sub base, we pulled everything out, and all of a sudden, there's a huge soft spot. Well, then we require a company where we look for a company like Braun or American Testing to give us their recommendation on how would you fix that soft spot? How are you going to fix this wet area? So, that's, that's some things that can change that proposal. Doesn't happen to us often, but it has happened. So, again, we got, we requested proposals from the two companies. Braun InterTech is a little bit higher than American Engineering, but after talking to the contractor and to the two different companies, Braun actually took the effort to call the contractor and talk to the two different suppliers of concrete and of asphalt. And so, we think they kind of did their homework. So, that's why we're recommending, or staff and engineering is recommending that we hire Braun InterTech to do the professional services testing for 2019 street reconstruction project at a cost of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
More in the street, we have heard that we're party to take a low bid?
No. No, no, not in this situation. This is considered professional services.
And this will be built until the end, assuming?
The one thing, it was in a memo, but I didn't forget to mention that this is also a cost share with Scott County, because the majority of this testing will be happening on County Road Thirty Seven.
And it'll be on that percentage? Sort of.
No, that's okay. So, there's a twenty-eight thousand the city should share?
No, that is total cost of the contract at this point. And then, Scott County share would be thirty-nine percent of that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the bid with Braun InterTech. I guess I'll make that motion.
Second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero.
Thank you.
Now you can sit down.
I'm done.
Yes. Next, we got, Ken, are you going to take the?
I will.
Item number five.
All right. So, back at the February twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting, we have a couple of agenda items related to the Belzer property, specifically the forward portion of the building out there. And we have conditionings permit C one two thousand nineteen and variance request was D one two thousand nineteen. And these are all applied for by JJM Properties, two L's. So, we had looked at the plat for this with the council a few months ago, and that included the land, it's kind of outlined in purple here, that was known as Belzer's addition, or Belzer additions, excuse me. So, the CUP concerns the actual building additions that they're looking to do a little over six thousand square feet of building additions, and then some parking lot expansion, and other peripheral work related to that. You can see on the map here, the property right now is not within the city limits. We talked about that under item C of this set of agenda items regarding where we're at with the annexation and kind of why we've held off on moving this from Planning Commission forward to council here tonight was trying to get some items with the annexation caught up kind of the timeline of the plat. And I believe we've reached that point. One of the main sticky points, you know, get into more of this with the annexation was getting city water and sewer up to the site. It looks like we will have that running through a future third street southeast corridor via an easement for water and sewer up to the property. So, that was kind of what we were waiting for. But we feel it's appropriate at this time, we're going to wait and hold these items until we knew that was issue had been resolved and moving forward. So, that's why we're back here tonight. So, again, future zoning on this with the B two community commercial, just kind of the red area that you see there, that's an extension of the zoning that includes Cobhorns, over to McDonald's, Shell Station, and the strip mall. It's kind of a continuation of that zoning throughout this side of town. It's our general business development district. It's another view of the site today. You can obviously see some of the sites currently gravelled and unpaved, and they have a lot of cars out there. If you've been by there recently, there's probably more cars than there's ever been. So, this project will allow them to pave sizable portion, more of their property and get those cars unpaved. As I noted, once this property is brought into the city limits and by doing up, the CUP and variance are contingent upon our annexation being completed with township, we did want to get this moving forward in front of you with the contingent approval based on annexation, just due to the kind of unique timing of how this has played out. But a CUP is required for the expansion of more sales and service in the B two district. And then, the variance that requests to incorporate the property was to vary from our normal perimeter parking tree requirements that would normally require trees right in front of the building and the parking areas along the highway of the site. So, they want to vary from that. Obviously, they want exposure, they want visibility of their product and vehicles for sale. And then, the other part of it was for interior parking lot landscaping variance, so they don't have to have landscaping islands all over the interior of the lot, making it difficult to move cars and to maintain that lot, specifically in winter. As I noted again, the site will be soon annexed into the property or annexed into the city limits. We'll talk about the early annexation agreement draft with the township. And then, we are not able to actually formally establish the B two community commercial zoning until that annexation has occurred. The zoning is really a formality at that point, we already have it guided as B two, so it's just a kind of a process how that'll play out. And then, just a little more specifics on the addition. So, sixty-two hundred and sixty square feet of building addition or shop floor expansion specifically, and then the paving of the lot, which is what our partners. So, again, at the Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-seventh of February, we did hold a public hearing. One adjacent property owner, Mr. Tom Topka, provided comment. Mr. Topka added comments regarding adding some memories on the west side of the site that were not originally included in the subplan. Those were included in the plan, and we'll go over that in more detail. Just before then, Mike Belzer, one of the owners of the property, commented, there was a comment from MINDA that stated in their comments that if traffic got to be turned into and out of the site, they may require a median be installed on Turnpike One Nineteen or Main Street in that particular area. And they just noticed that they had concerns about that. And obviously, that is an issue that is not of concern due to any traffic or crashes or anything at this point, but just wanted to point out that MINDA did make that comment and Belzer's weren't concerned about it. It was not a condition for MINDA to add a median at this point. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend CUP approval on a three zero. So, here's the site over plan. So, you can kind of see basically the area that shows a bit white on the overhead here, that's kind of the area that's currently paved. The area in gray is the area they're looking at paving, a significant amount of paving that be added to the property. That's why you see the addition of a water retention pump for stormwater management of the property. Pretty sizable area for that, obviously, if you want pavement that they have already existing, and then with the addition there. So, that is what they're proposing for that. We've had city engineers review that and working towards final plans for that at this point. The main concern, we'll give it as one of the variance that Mr. Topka had, was adding some trees around the perimeter of this side of the site. With the variance, normally the site would require trees around the whole perimeter of the property, kind of blocking the view from the street. Normally, you want to hide parking lots. And in this case, I did some research of other cities in Minnesota and also throughout the country. Typically, they would have either performance standards or entertain an easement or a variance in this case to allow that visibility and open up. So, with the variance discussion, and again, I'll kind of touch on that when we get to that point, the variance would weigh of any landscaping from being kind of from the front edge of the building around kind of in that view shed along the front, except for four planting areas that they are adding, kind of on the four corners of the site, well, one on the northwest corner, one on each side of the parking area, landscape, kind of entrance points, and then another landscape area on the corner. So, it won't be completely devoid of any aesthetic appeal. It's just kind of concentrating those on some areas where it's not blocking that view of the dealership there. So, that's kind of the key points of that. But the building itself, they're doing basically remodel of the interior of the building, and then the additions for the six thousand square feet are on the east side of the building. You see a kind of gray area here that I'm trying to highlight. And then, another portion kind of along the back area, we have like a bed liner install bay in that area. It's just one of the examples of the amenities that are being added in there. This is kind of a three D view of the lighting. Obviously, we have a lighting plan. They have to meet our glare standard, and this is the three D rendering of how that light would be achieved on the property and not exceed our maximum light output for development. And this shows that, so you can see, this is probably the best view I could find in a three D setting, how much would be paved and lit, straight, and give you a real sense of how that would look once developed with the additions on the building on there. And then, some building design renderings here for you. So, again, they're meeting our B two design requirements. We have requirements for high quality materials, varying colors, varying rough lines. They are achieving that with obviously different façades for different portions of the building, the showroom, obviously being kind of the central focus point here, and then the surface fade with a difference, look, a little bit of difference appearance to that area of the building, which I think lends itself to breaking up that long appearance of the building as you see it from the highway. And then, just some line drawings of that. I do want to note, they are not making any changes to the Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep, Ram portion of the building. So, that will remain as you see it today. And those are remodeled, or I should say added on in the relatively recent past. So, it actually fits very well together with the look of the core building, work that they're doing. So, just kind of the layout of that. Whoop, back up that one. And then, just some other elevations. So, they kind of keep the theme going, you know, different building heights, different materials, colors, et cetera, throughout the building. So, I think they did a good job designing the building and making that fit in with our B two district on that end of town. And then, finally, some pictures of the site. They're not proposing any changes to the access into and out of the property. MINDA did not require any changes at this point. And again, just the majority of what you'd see on the exterior would be additional paving of the lot in addition to the relatively small additions on the building. I'll point out before, just another view here for you, show all the areas that will be paved. Obviously, they're currently. So, I think it'll be a good upgrade for the look of the property, and obviously, is kind of a gateway to Dupre on the east side, because it'll be quite attractive entrance for the town. So, again, we have a resolution in front of you to approve the commission's permit. There are eight findings and fifteen conditions contained therein. If you would like, I can stop there and you can have a discussion on that. Otherwise, the variance does tie pretty unitarily with the CUP. So, however you'd like to proceed.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions before we proceed in the variance part?
Yeah, I do. And I don't know if you can answer this, Ken, or maybe Mike can, but the, I totally understand wanting to showcase the vehicles and stuff, but the landscaping part, have you discussed any plans on what's going to be in those corners, or?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you said it well, is that it's really the gateway to the community.
Yep.
And, you know, I'd like to see something that looks nice and.
I think it is attractive. I don't know, Greg or Grant, would you be able to provide some comment about, well, I don't forget who designed that portions of?
Do we have a plan up there?
I don't have a zoom. Let me see, zoom to the next section here. Not to that level of detail.
Well, I've just seen, you know, other dealerships where they have like the little mini mountain and they park cars on.
Not like that, no, not like that.
Or, you know, whatever.
Um.
What cities did you talk to, do you remember?
I looked at quite a few in the state that have dealt with this issue before, because most cities do have the very similar perimeter parking lot requirements that we have, where you're trying to hide the parking lot.
Right.
And it's just seem intent to open it up, but, you know, you want to keep something that they just don't want to see the concrete and absolutely nothing kind of up for that. So, I'm trying to recall directly, but I think it was generally low lying type shrubs and a person native type vegetation, if I remember correctly. I don't have the specifics with me, Sean, but I thought it kind of fit well with what you see throughout the remainder of town. In parking lot islands.
Okay.
It was a good match for that. It wasn't any extravagant, you know.
Well, that's just what I was trying to get at. Was it just like?
Lower, lower.
Little bush.
Lower level.
Stuff, or is there, you know?
Lower level, no trees.
Okay.
My question is, we've got the carton for the horse here. I mean, don't we have to wait till it's actually annexed into the city before we are required to do these?
Yep. So, we've got on the resolution, a condition, or I should say, condition specifically, number twelve, that the CUP is not valid until it is actually annexed, service of city utilities, and the plat of Belzer Addition is filed. So, again, you have the plat of Belzer Addition approved on year end. They're still pending final wetland approvals and everything for that. We've got the annexation in discussion with, we'll introduce that here tonight. Township will review that next Monday. I believe that will go forward at that point. We're just trying to get everything basically set up so things can continue to move forward. Otherwise, we would have one heck of a delay, and they have a very specific timeframe that we're trying to meet. So, yes, it is a little bit unusual. We do believe in time of the city. We do believe in time to the city attorney and we've conditioned these appropriately to, yes, a little bit cart in front of the horse, but then we have the conditions to temper that to a point where that everything can't move forward until the annexation has been formally filed and approved with the state. At that point, we can then do the appropriate zoning for the property. Is when we annex, it's actually normally brought in as our 90th family residential. And then you have to rezone after that. So yeah, it's been a unique process, but you know, we've been kind of going forward as we can again, you know, conditioning things as we're able to, but knowing that that annexation is kind of the key item here. And I think that's why we've held that off until now. When we heard that, the issue of the utilities had been, issue had been finally agreed to between Topka and Belzers to provide the utilities up to the site. Without that, we would not have been able to annex, we needed a water and sewer. So that's been unique.
So if we go forward with this tonight, and then I guess annex, what other steps are needed before, you mentioned that we have to rezone it?
Yeah, rezoning, that's really.
Is that the only step after the annexation because we've taken action on this stuff?
Correct. And the rezoning is really more of a formality. We had done before, the city attorney just put that in the early annexation agreements. But there's an administrative law judge in the state that doesn't want that language in there anymore. So he said, just make it separate, handle it, kind of on the tail end. So that's what we're going to do for that.
You talked about the easement, will we be a party to the easement?
The easement will be for, in favor of the city of Newt.
So we'll have to be a part of that?
Correct.
That'd be another step then. And is that easement just for sewage or is that going to include the road?
Sewer and water, actually it'll be for public future road right of way.
So it'll be the structure that is.
Correct, it'll be 66 feet long, which will be the future corridor of Third Street. We just don't need the road, actually built it this time. So let me put up the.
I can't recall this, Tom's property go all the way to the county road?
So Tom's property currently, I'll just try to outline it a little bit here. This is Tom's property.
I think Marv's in there.
Right now. And then Marv Deutsch owns property to the south here. This is Marv Deutsch's property between it. So he doesn't go all the way to the county road. But we do have right of way, we've, we're getting with the plat of Belzer Edition. And then there's already right of way for a plat from the township, boy, almost 20 years ago now.
So at the end of this, will we have the easement all the way to the county road?
We will.
At the end of this, okay.
Yep, we just won't have the road in there at this point. But one of the things we had talked about with the plat was we'll have language in the development agreement specifying that when the roadway surface actually reaches Belzer's property, that would trigger that. They would then construct their portion and then get all the way over to the county road. But we just don't need the baggage road infrastructure at this point. Utilities are what we're needing.
I think in your memo, you talked about pedestrian walkway. Is that being constructed as a part of this project?
Not along the highway or anything at this point. Ultimately, that's what that would have to connect to. Or are you talking internally on?
I guess I understood this to be north of the building.
Oh, yes, that is required. They have to provide for a path from the front access to the building to a future connection point along the highway. So it's really not a physical connection that's going to be made at this point because there's no trail along the highway.
So it'll only be from their driveway to the east or?
No, it's from the front door. The requirement's from the front door out to a public.
Oh, I misunderstood.
No, no.
Usually just striping in a parking.
No sidewalk or anything that's going to follow the highway?
No, not at this point. There, it's in the plan long-term, but no, there's no plan to do that.
So if a developer came in the same circumstances, wouldn't that be part of that agreement?
Yeah, so Topka's property, when that develops, we're going to have that get that to that point.
And if the dealership property?
Correct.
North side?
Yep, on the north side.
That there would be a sidewalk?
There would be. Actually, it would be specifically a two-minute trail.
So, but we're not doing that as part of this?
No, because it wouldn't, you would have a big gap and then you just have some of that right in front of Belzer's property there. It wouldn't connect anything.
But we don't have any leverage to do in the future, do we?
We always put in the trails of city, those are city projects. So we have a fund, we're collecting development fees, I should back up a little bit. We're collecting some development fees that pay for that, that Belzer's paying with their plat.
Okay, well, so it's.
Sorry, that was covered with the plat.
Because this is coming in through kind of a sideways motion, I didn't know that we are still have the leverage of typical developers.
Yep, those are our, yep. So the developers' group, we plan to have in front of you with the annex. We should be at the 20th of May, is what we're hoping for.
And so if we get a contiguous piece of property, we could build a sidewalk?
Then we could.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do you want us to move on then?
Already like to work, I think the variance kind of ties in. Maybe we'll just go through that and then see if the applicants have any other comment as well.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get back to the variance here. All right, so for the variance, for the same night of the planning commission meeting, as I talked, it was really about that perimeter landscaping. Normally require trees at the 40-foot spacing along the front of the lot and 30 feet along all the other perimeters of that parking lot. And then 3% of the interior of the lot has to be landscaping islands. So the variance request was to vary from that perimeter landscaping along the front. And I may pull up here so you're more specific with you. So again, what they wanted to vary from is if you drew an imaginary line right along the front edge of the building, to not require the trees from that point forward. So they kind of keep, as you're driving through, you can keep that area open. But in exchange for that, and this is one thing the planning commission talked about, was to have those four landscape areas kind of along the front. This one here, one on each side of the driveway entrance. Again, this is low-lying shrubs and vegetation there. And then the fourth one on that northeast corner of the property there. Planning commission's recommendation, believe that would still provide a good aesthetic on the front of the site. They would still have full perimeter landscaping around the remainder of the property as required by the code. Have a mix of deciduous and every kind of throughout the remainder of the site. So we don't have just one variety that would be susceptible to disease or damage. And then that's really all I have on the variance end of it. So it's really that. And then the variance from the perimeter or the interior landscape islands. So they're obviously moving a lot of vehicles when they have to clear snow. Having a bunch of islands throughout would be difficult to navigate. That was kind of the reason for moving these. Basically, the replacement for the islands up along the highway is kind of a change for those throughout the parking lot. I think they make a better impact anyway along the edge of the site, along the north end. And I think that will be an attractive look after that site moving forward. Certainly with the paving and all the other work they're doing, it should be quite enough. So with the variance, we had another resolution, there were six findings and two conditions in that resolution. Excuse me, for the variance. And that is also in your packet for your review.
Any questions on the variance?
I have a couple just on the, again, the landscaping part. So the trees. No, sorry. Is this covered?
That's the issue. Great question.
So the trees, I again, understand that, you know, because of disease and whatnot, environment conditions, you want to differentiate between the species of trees. But is there any type of ratio that they have to use? I mean, typically they do more evergreens, those can proliferate.
You get more off-season screening with that. We don't have a specific ratio requirement in our ordinance.
Is that something we should look at though? You know, when you put a big row of evergreens there, it really can detract from the whole thing if they're not constantly maintained.
Yep. Yeah, I don't see that a lot in too many cities that they require just specific, you know, every other or a percentage or anything. It is a good point. I think the fear in getting too specific is that you could have some tree disease come along and then you have to amend your ordinance, go back. I understand where you're going with that completely. I think they've got a good mix here. I think that even among the evergreens, not all the same kind, which is a good thing for diversity of the plant life on the property.
And then let's use a disease situation. Is the property owner then responsible if the tree does die or comes or whatever they have a certain amount of time to?
Yep, so with conditional use permits, we review those basically on a staff level annually, make sure the conditions are still met. You know, if there happened to be an area where a tree died, and we've dealt with this on other properties of a tree died, you know, you should contact them, put the tree back in. Obviously, it's going to take time to grow again, that type of thing. But yeah, we do monitor those to make sure that they just aren't forgotten of all of the trees come down. There are conditions that run with the land and are expected to be there throughout the life of, you know, living all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the variance side? Okay, if not, I guess, now do you want us to handle A and B first and then we can go to?
I do want to note specifically before we get any further, I don't know if Mr. Belzer, you had anything to add or the architect or the engineer?
I do not, it sounds dynamite so far.
Yes, item A and B would be appropriate to.
Okay, well, why don't we look at this with the letter A, the resolution for a conditional use permit. I get a motion by Rick Seiler, second by Sean Ryan to approve the resolution of the conditional use permit. If there's no other comments, questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Second, the resolution regarding the variance. I guess I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
I get a second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay. Now let's get into this annexation deal.
All right, so this is the fun part here.
Define fun.
All right. Kind of give the council a little bit of a background. We haven't had too many annexations recently, but going way back to 1978, city in Lanesford Township entered into a joint orderly annexation agreement that covered various portions of land outside of their city limits for annexation that basically if somebody petitioned for annexation and we could give utilities to them, we would bring a resolution jointly with the township and the city on that same resolution. For review approval, and we would, at that point, meet all the conditions of the order of the annexation agreement. And that would be sent to the state and the annexation would be approved. Well, back in 1997, obviously I was not here at that point, there was some kind of a disagreement of some sort between the township and the city about continuing to use that 1978 orderly annexation agreement. The township at that point made a formal statement and, I don't know if I put a copy of their letter in the bag, I don't think I did, but they filed a letter with the city saying, we don't recognize that annexation agreement and that's that. Well, one party of our joint resolution can't unilaterally cancel an agreement. So every time we had an annexation, basically during my tenure here from 2004 to recently, we would attempt to have them pass a joint resolution with us. They would negate to do that and then we would proceed with annexation by ordinance. And that had been going on basically from 1997. I think our last annexation we did, Lanesford Township was probably back in 2008. And you know, we didn't have any issue with doing that. Basically just ignoring our orderly annexation agreement. Well, there's an administrative law judge, I kind of commented on their stance on adding unnecessary provisions such as rezoning and agreements. But they do not take kindly to cities and townships that ignore their orderly annexation agreements and instead annex in other ways. So we were informed when our city attorney called the boundary adjustments office at the state that they would very likely have an issue with our past practice of annexations with Lanesford Township and that it could potentially be something they would flag and be holding contested hearing case for, which we did not want. That would be very lengthy and very expensive for the city and the township. So I attended the Lanesford Township Board meeting on April 8th and had a conversation with their township board who consisted of Tony Kowish, Mark Bearhoven, and of course, last name is escaping me now. Kropchak, last name is Kropchak, I'll think of it. But anyway, so.
Mr. Kropchak.
Mr. Kropchak. Two of the members were new, one, Mr. Kowish, has been on for a number of years throughout our annexation agreements that were not done through our agreement that we haven't done. Long story short, on our meeting on April 8th, when I met with them, they said they had no objection to basically canceling our old 1978 orderly annexation agreement, which is very outdated, did not meet any of the current state statutes. But the state would still accept annexations under the provisions of that agreement. But it was something the township wasn't recognizing anyway. And city attorney's office said, just, let's just look at a new agreement. And we could have gone one of two ways. One was just entering into a specific annexation agreement for specific properties to be annexed at this point, which is a direction that they wanted to go. And I still think the door is open, we can look at a larger orderly annexation agreement for a larger area around our peripheral growth area of the city. But they wanted to kind of take a big step here and just look at the Belzer annexation specifically. And that's what we've been working towards since April 8th. And this graph that you have in front of you was sent to the township last week. Their attorney that they have hired didn't review that, gets comments back. So very minor tweaking of the language, we'll probably work on this week with them. But in a nutshell, this agreement that I have in front of you would be to annex the 16.8 acres of the Belzer Edition property, which is the Ford, Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep, Ram building. And then the Chevy property, which is leaving described as mobile addition. So overall, about 25 and a half acres. And again, the reason we're kind of holding off on bringing a lot of this forth, those are waiting for Mr. Topka and the Belzers to work on an agreement to get utilities up to their property. For orderly annexation agreements, it does not require property via budding adjacent to the city limits. It just requires you have the ability to provide urban services to them, which in this case is city water and sewer. And that was kind of the township's main thing is, hey, if you can get city water and sewer out there, which they need for their development of this building, they're sprinkling the dealership building with their renovations. And then obviously would have needed to, during their set decks or how to do that, they're being connected to the city sewer as well. Those are kind of the key points that the township doesn't have any issue with us moving forward with some new agreements. So kind of a lot to take into, we wanted to introduce this here to you tonight. Like I said, the agreement is basically in the form that would be taken to the township, subject to some very minor changes. One item that's, that's new from our old orderly annexation agreement is item number seven on page three regarding tax reimbursement. This is an issue between the city and the township. Any annexation agreement that is entered into, under current law, has to provide for language on tax reimbursement over a period of time from the township, or from the city to the township. The law provides it has to be a minimum of two years or a maximum of eight years for reimbursement. Kind of the phase in their loss of taxes for, in this case, what was, you know, two operating commercial businesses. So their ultimate tax loss when the annexation is completed is a little over $7,500. That's a big deal to the township. So when I met with them on the 8th of April, was they wanted to make sure that there was at least this five-year phase in. And this is very typical language that you will find in examples from the lead Minnesota cities or even the boundary adjustments office on how cities and townships handle this. They typically do a five-year phase in, they're kind of phasing 20% of the taxes out every year until the township. In this case, in the year 2025, would then not be reimbursed for any taxes any longer and it would be 100% kept by the city. So they were fine with that language. Historically, they used to do, and I can't say it's tongue-in-cheek a little bit, they used to get. used to get blood money for annexations, which was really a payment from the developer to the township instead of the tax reimbursement. Lanesford Township got burned by that back in 2008, where the developer ended up not paying them, city was not a party to that agreement, but this basically provides cover for the township to get some reimbursement back, it's required by statute, and that's really the only negotiable, the main negotiable point of this agreement. That's a new item that we didn't have in the agreement before. By any chance, a fair compensation for their loss of pretty substantial business plan that they would no longer have within their taxing jurisdiction, so that was kind of the main point, but it was a good conversation we had, you know, we don't probably talk enough with Lanesford Township or even Lanesford Township, but it was good to have the dialogue opened back up and I think we'll have a good working relationship going forward.
We're going to correct the numbering of this, the 1, 2, 2, 3, 4.
You bet.
So I know that the tax reimbursement you mentioned is by state statutes for a minimum of two years, was the town's...
2, 2, 8.
2, 2, 8, yes, yes. So was the town, did the township make a contingent to signing the agreement to...
Wanted the tax reimbursement in there, and we had talked just conceptually, they knew how much taxes they took in from the property in total, and they talked at the meeting, said, "How about a five-year?" And I think, you know, they had obviously looked at some other agreements that have been filed with the state recently. I had done the same, and five years is a pretty common number with cities. Some chooses to pay it out and lump some on year one, but they wanted to keep that, that money kind of coming in over that five-year time period, so they get kind of better prepared for a loss.
Sure, sure, I understand the reasoning behind it, I was just wondering if it was...
That was a key point for them.
Just a quick question on the getting the utilities. I can see how you get the utilities to the Ford site, is it just going to be a continuation on there, on the easement to get it to the Mahold site?
That's what they're going to do. I don't have cricket access to that at all. I don't know if you may, it'd be better to comment on some of the plans for getting service over, more, how to get service over to Chevy?
Yeah, I was just wondering, because obviously it's going over under Colby Road and the buildings are not that close.
I don't want to misrepresent anything, but...
We're currently, with the Topka piece here, with the extension of the road, the extension of this road, will be bringing the sewer and the water through from that existing cul-de-sac, which is what road is here.
Off of it.
And Third Street.
And Third Street. So we'll extend it through here, from here we'll bring it up to Belzer's. Anything beyond this point is for future. So Belzer's responsible to get to at least his property, and then we'll extend it to the building and the site, and then the future development of that sanitary and water sewer will be extended in public right of way that's there.
That'll be when the, when the road is needed. There's actually a road there, it's not needed before that.
So then there's not going to be water and sewer to the Mahold site in the annexed end? Or are you going to be...
I had the same question, so I...
You know, you said you're going to bring it in from the Belzer site down to the facility.
Correct.
And then are you going to be making a easterly move to the Mahold site?
But I believe it's still being worked out.
It's still being worked out, but that is conceptually the idea.
Okay. So when the annexation is approved and that the goal is to get utilities to both sites?
Correct. And that's what we need to put in the development agreement, how all those details are worked out, so we still have a couple of weeks to get some of those details worked out.
Okay.
But those would be private, I should know, those would be private from basically the right-of-way line up to Belzer car dealership here, and then however they get it over to Chevy as well.
Would be private?
Be private. Basically service lines at that point. Long service lines, but they are service lines.
Would it be their advantage then when that road gets put through to change that, or did you keep it that way?
I think the need for that road to go through is, I don't know, I don't want to put a year on it, but I think it's, I think it would just be unneeded at this point.
But what would be private would be what's on their private property?
It just seems like a lot of utilities to on their private property.
Either way, it's a lot.
Yeah. It's likely that we're not going to be taking public utilities out there for some time as well. To the Chevy dealership.
Right.
But to get that all the way over to County Road 3 and up to Chevy from a public standpoint is not forecast any time in the near term. Bringing the utilities to the Belzer property and then bringing private utilities into their site, and then looking at taking it over to the Chevy dealership, is that we can't provide them with any conceptual timeframe that we would reasonably have public utilities up to County Road 3 and up to the north. So am I interpreting this correctly, that to fulfill our requirement that we have to be able to provide utilities to this site for the annexation agreement, we're going by way of them going through, they're considering it contiguous property and they're doing private?
Correct.
That's how we're justifying the annexation?
As long as it ultimately is coming back into our city water and sewer services, then that meets that intent.
And we won't be, have any responsibility for maintenance?
Not from the, not from the, you know, the main up into their property, just like any other property.
But we will own the main.
But we will own the main and Third Street right of way for both water and sewer. There's great value in that for future development. If you remember our sewer study, we showed this location exactly for the gravity line getting to the point where they're going to install it, and then the water, that part of the, kind of a truism system kind of economy.
Installation of that water and sewer in this public right-of-way that will be provided by Mr. Topka, is that with the installation of these utilities, that opens up all of that Topka property for development.
Actually, no, Mr. Topka does not have any intent to develop at this point. We did ask if he would have joined an annexation petition, did not choose to do that. He's just noted, he's not in the position to be a developer any longer, but that doesn't prevent it from soon thereafter becoming developed or annexed, it's just, it's something Mr. Topka's not going to be doing.
We appreciate all the work everyone's done in this, I think it's a good deal for everyone around to find a way to get it done.
It's been a, it's been a quite a bit of discussion at this point, so we're getting to the end.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I think this was information only, being that you're going to proceed with the annexation and hopefully decide eventually...
We'll accomplish the goals with their discussion next week and we'll come back with a plan.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any questions? I know there's a lot of things in there, we did have a couple extra sets of minutes and we should kind of add to that, and a lot of gambling things going on, so...
I have a few miscellaneous ones. They're sort of critiqued, are we having a routine with that service or is that their contest?
Yeah, we have a...
And so we pay it on APU?
Yep.
Do we own a small piece of land that would pay property taxes to the sure county bond?
Don't we own the, the house we rent behind utilities?
Correct.
That's 104 Allen. That's what that was for.
Well, the only properties that I know of on the south side is our 40-acre farm. We have the strips of land that we tried to deed back to people, if you remember that, Chuck?
Yes.
They still don't want to take all of us, we have like three slivers left.
Aren't those in Saskatchewan?
Those are a circle.
Oh, sir, okay. And then we do own that house.
South of the electric plant.
The electric plant that we do rent out, it is currently rented out, right?
By the utilities.
Yep.
Well, the way you said ducks are limited, I did see an IRS letter.
We don't include that in that.
Okay, sorry.
All of the verification that we're required to do, we have that in the file, but we don't typically attach that.
Okay, inside the check down side, you know.
Anything else?
The major majority of my reading was this consent agenda.
Rick, just for you, one day, we're going to just have a consent agenda for the whole meeting.
I'm from this below.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments?
No.
Rick, so I made a motion, I'll second it, to approve the consent agenda items. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passed by zero, now we're to the fun part. Mitch, you got anything?
I have nothing to add.
Yep, you're just like Mitch, we love it.
Jim, you got anything?
Patrick?
Just enjoyed the letter, hopefully it won't be too late.
All right, okay, thank you. Jim, do you have anything?
Good turnout for the marathon, a lot of people, no issues at all or no concerns, it was cool.
Okay, good. Glenn?
I just want to keep everybody informed that the contractor plans on starting on this year's construction project on Monday, the 13th. The plan is to start just a little bit east of Columbus on County Road 37 and close that road down to everybody but local traffic, local traffic being living there, have to get to, the apartments back off of 37, wherever you need to get to as far as considered local traffic would still be open to that. The plan would be to start milling that area from east of Columbus to Highway 19, start lowering structures, being manholes, valve boxes, things like that, start replacing catch basins, and also milling the residential streets that are planned to have a milling overlay. So that's starting on May 13th or a week from today. After school's out, then they would close the rest of County Road 37 from Columbus to Highway 21, and then start on the roundabouts. Right now, it's planned to start on the north roundabout, or the one at 12th in Columbus by the high school, and then when that one's done, then go to the south roundabout, so...
When is that supposed to be completed?
It has to be done before school starts or the end of August. According to his plan, that he gave us as far as progress on the project, he really plans it being done about the second week in August. Mother nature will dictate if that's going to happen.
Public notification and signee just begun already then?
Say it again, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening.
Public notification and signee?
Yep, public notification's happening as of tomorrow, they'll be sending out a letter to all the residents, it's on Facebook, thanks to Ken, on Facebook and on the city website. There is a sign out on County Road 37 now saying construction starts May 13th. On Monday, May 13th, there'll be more signage showing up, talking about local traffic only, things like that.
Thank you.
Last thing I got is the golf course is almost done, they were back in, we did a walkthrough with the contractor on April 28th or 29th, sorry I didn't write it down, about a week and a half ago, they were back in there within two days to do the minor touch-ups, it was, it was kind of sanding of taping compound, and then they repainted that area and things like that, so pretty simple fixes, but they were there quickly to get it done, so as far as the construction end of it, we're done, so...
Mike, did Kirk get you everything you needed for the plan?
Most of what we need. We're working on the final details of that and we'll add that to Glenn's and send it in.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Ken?
Very last page in your packet, if you didn't look at it, the scale educational workshop, it's a really good workshop, if you haven't been to it before, on May 22nd up at the Spring Lake Township, so if you haven't been, it's a good one to go to, if you have been, it might be a good refresher too, but I won't be there, but there will be other planners that will be putting that on.
I have to let my office know.
That's all I have.
All right, Michael?
One quick item is the advisory task force that we've been working with for the last, how many months? 18 months? I think something of that nature. Their final recommendations will be coming in to you on the 20th as far as the look of the downtown for the highway project, so they'll be in with an overview, PowerPoint presentation, and recommendations for your consideration.
That is next week, your next meeting?
May 20th. Maggie's on that committee, so she already kind of has a heads-up view of what's there and, yeah, all of their meetings that they've held over the last year and a half have been narrowed down and put together with thoughts as to what should be included in the final plans on the highway project.
Is there a way we can get a preview of that before, just our normal packet, a few days before?
Uh-uh, I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Barb?
I have your interview packets, I put them on the table for you, so if there's anything you need changed or added, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Maggie?
No, I don't have anything.
Sean?
Just a couple of things. Ken, the, oh, in front of ShopCo, there's like four stacks of pallets probably, and I, I know they're closing, but can we, you're already on top of it.
Yeah. It's very hard to get anything.
Okay, I understand.
We're trying.
As long as we're trying, I guess. And then the second thing is, is, again, we're running into the situation that we did last year after the citywide cleanup, when there's TVs laying around, there's mattresses, there's two different mattress piles on Main Street, what can we do for that?
I know, I just put another reminder on Facebook today, just, hey, if your stuff didn't get picked up, it's not going to get picked up, make it out of the ranges or get it out of there, and we're going to make a sweep with our enforcement crew.
Oh, you will, okay.
Yep, we'll be doing that, we, there's a number of areas out there, a lot of mattresses, a lot of TVs.
Furniture, yeah.
Is it, is it moved Saturday?
Saturday. Saturday from 9:00 to noon, shred event, south parking lot here, free paper shredding, and they will also shred hard drives and other select electronics for an additional fee.
Okay.
No, that was it?
Rick, you have anything? Bruce?
A couple of things, has the labor agreement been completed that we approved? Executed.
At least, you need...
Yeah, it was signed when it came due.
Yeah, from then.
That's all concluded then? Yes. Okay. I appreciate the priorities meeting that we had, I got a lot out of that, so I appreciate bringing us all up to date and doing that. Some great things that occurred at today's meeting with the donation and Bray Auto, which required a lot of staff time, both of those things, especially the EDA and things like that require a lot of handholding, so I commend city staff for the work they've done in these areas, it's something to celebrate, I think.
Second.
Okay, that it?
Yep.
I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're out of here, thank you everyone.